Everybody, I'm gonna call this work session of the board supervisor's support. Can you hear roll call please?
Mr. Greenwood.
Here.
Mr. Hedges.
Here.
Mr. Garber.
Here.
Mr. Moran.
Here.
Chairman Spous.
Here. We have an amended agenda in front of us unless there are any changes to what's before set our place labeled amended agenda in a motion to adopt.
I'll make it work.
So, motion second and discussion. It's great.
Mr. Hedges.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Moran.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Chairman Spous.
I with the agenda adopted, let's move into our work session matters. First up, we have fire EMS department. Chief Reed.
Good evening. I'm just gonna give you some highlights and updates. The update is pretty much the same as it was before. The exception of the COVID infection rates across the United States, Virginia, and even in our area have kind of leveled and are decreasing a little bit. We still remain a high transmission area. And the severity and hospitalization still are gonna be of high numbers of the folks who have not been vaccinated. So, again, please get out there, get vaccinated.
And when you say our area, you're talking about the entire county?
Three rivers.
Three rivers, okay, the whole district, guys, okay.
Yes. So, the hospitals to the west, south of us, where we run most of our calls are a different region. But there, they've been heavily hit, just like we have, and we continue to stay. I mentioned code black, code red last time. Basically, for an understanding of that, it means that we have to call a hotline, basically. And VCU will determine which hospital we take our patients to. So, that adds to the trouble. Somebody sent us to New Kent the other day to, from up in Alvin. It just, it just adds to the issues that we're facing, but I just want to explain that a little bit. The next thing I want to touch on, all the other stuff is pretty much status quo as it has been. Our policies are supportive of CDC. If they change something, we change right along with them, try to stay on top of that. The county's mask policy still in place. We did not get the safer grant as Steve explained to us in the last meeting. But through the Arbo's support, we'll be able to, if the emergency, discuss. So, just so you keep that on forefront of our minds. With the ESO, the transition with the reporting for fire EMS, scheduling, all the training stuff that we have available to us for the three fire departments that's been involved, about 75% complete. West Point and Kingway both have pretty much finished all of our templates for our UMS reports. And we're working currently, as we speak, hopefully tonight, actually, with me to finalize their, if they have some staff. We're working with them to finalize their templates. And we have completed all the change orders on the engine. So, that'll go into production as its next number possible number comes up with Rose and Bauer. So, that'll be right on time for the 12-month delivery from the time that we actually ordered it. So, everything with the engine itself is still on time, something's on time. Knock on wood, and the ambulance is still expected to be here in December-ish. They have already got chassis in, which played a part in supporting that early order. And so, we bought the chassis through the vendor, no, I'm sorry, through the sales company, not the vendor itself, who makes the ambulance. So, that chassis came in early, we're able to get a box in production, so it should be ready in December. And as far as the VM scenario or assessment of our EOP, it's moving forward. We're meeting this week with a committee, basically of all the directors in the county, to set some goals for what we want to pull out of this scenario. So, I just want to let you guys know, move forward now. You have any questions?
Just curious about you saying the numbers and everything were up, but the differences and what's going out there with the, some people have the booster, some people don't, are we, is it yes, no? Some people, I mean, I heard only the Pfizer is available, but then I heard it wasn't available. And is it only for elderly people?
Most of us have Moderna.
Yes, it's a, we had, I haven't heard of a booster yet, no.
So, they're, they're on the docket for the FDA, I think, on 18 to have a hearing on the booster for Moderna. So, until that's approved, there's no, if you have a Moderna vaccine, there's no booster available to you.
Gentlemen, it's out there. It is, that's, that's a first difference. It's not, it's not approved by the FDA yet, but that stamp that they gave five.
Right, if you got the Pfizer vaccine, you can be prescribed a booster.
I'm really talking about Moderna. I don't know if you got, you got George Prior.
I've had all three.
Yeah.
No.
Because I was listening to a whole thing just the other day, which included the Kansas mind of, when the FDA has on the docket to even hear. But alright.
Well, the drugstore gave me saline, I don't know. I was just curious about the size of it for elderly, would you suggest if it's time?
Well, the CDC has recommendations out for the 65 and up, and then the high-risk, I think it started at 55 or something like that.
Well, I think it was anybody that was in a high-risk, not a patient or had.
Yeah, so it's, you know, all high-risk folks, and then.
Alright, thanks.
Yep.
Yeah.
Anything else? Uh, no, glad to hear the end, this is on time. We all know that those things are not on time, and I get hit, I can't do parts or anything right now, so. Just like to be excited about.
They have pre-ordered a bunch of chassis, it's all bright, also, it's good to be like.
Alright, thanks a lot. Okay. That's a human resources update, this Macam here.
Hello. I bring to you a topic for discussion. When the General Assembly in February initially passed the Virginia overtime wage law, it took compensatory time out completely. So, local governments were no longer able to offer compensatory time. And that was effective July 1st. Then, when they had their special session, there were so many localities that said, this is gonna kill us financially. They discussed it, they put it back in to allow localities to do compensatory timing. In that medium area of July, August, before things changed back, I was working with Brian Hughes at Sands Anderson to try to bring our policy in line with the new wage overtime law in case they did not bring that compensatory time back. At which time, he was reviewing our policies, and he suggested that we look at coming in line with FLSA standards for Fair Labor Standards Act of a base year of 2080 hours, which equates to a 40-hour week. There are plenty of other counties that do different hours, that they work like we do, 35 hours a week, but they still base their annual hours on 2080. So, that way, they only pay overtime over 40 hours a week, or that you work 35 hours a week, or seven and a half hours a week. That overtime standard is set at the 40 hours a week and the 2080 hours per. So, in our current policy, it says that administrative employees will work seven hours per day, not including the lunch period, and the work year consists of 1,820 hours. So, our hourly rate for overtime is calculated on the 1,820 hours. If we come into line with FLSA, it will be calculated on the 2,080 hours.
You talking about annual?
Yes, I'm talking about annually, so that.
You said a week, and I was like.
So, your 40-hour week calculates up to the 2,080 hours. So, that way, when I'm calculating your overtime, I mean, you're using the 1820 or the 2,080, which obviously makes a difference in your hourly rate and what your overtime rate would be.
Yeah, the sheriff regulates what he does.
Then, the law enforcement and fire fall under two totally different FLSA standards. They have completely different hours.
Have folks from the rest of the government that get comp?
Yes.
Okay.
So, when our administrative employees work, oh, at the current time, when they work over 35 hours a week, which is our base week, they get time and a half for that. If we come into line with FLSA standards at 40 hours a week, that 30, between 35 and 40, it's just kind of a gray area of.
So, we, we define our policy.
Correct.
What, what the week is based on the annualized hours.
Correct.
We have the, you know, basically federal law dictates that 2,080 annualized hours is the overtime basis. So, it's basically she's.
We're being more generous.
Right, right, right. We define our policy to be in line with federal guidelines as opposed to where we currently are, which is more generous than what she's proposing.
So, when we come in line, the first 260 hours that a county employee works over and above the 1820, will the regular, regular pay, is that, is that what we're talking about?
No, they'll receive their regular pay for every week.
Right.
It's just that the basis that I use to calculate in overtime pay would be changed.
Yes, so they would have, if we base it on 1820, will they have to work another 260 outside?
No. Well, I mean, that, that's obviously your decision as the board for the hours that we park. Right now, they only work the 35 hours a week, and we, and the county is generous enough to kind of give them that extra five hours that you don't have to work, but you get paid for in essence, if you go to that 20-hour standard. Right now, we're at the 35-hour standard, and we pay you for anything over this 35 hours. So, it's just kind of a topic of discussion to come in line, it saves the county some money in that sense.
So, we're not doing comp?
No.
They gave it back to us. So far, I haven't gotten any new timesheets to, to put it back in again.
But are we gonna do both? Are we gonna pay in some instances and give comp down in others?
If we went to the 40-hour week that we base the overtime on, there, there wouldn't be.
So, this is more a question of how we calculate.
Correct.
What, what we measure overtime.
Correct, do you want to calculate it on a 35-hour week or on a 40-hour week to come in line with federal standards? And Virginia wage law now. And if so, then we'll use that 2,080 for the hourly rate for anything worked over 40 hours.
Right, so we wouldn't, we're not talking about changing the compensation policy? We're just talking about changing the calculation.
Correct. So, it's kind of a food for thought for the work session of what else can I answer to, to help you decide, do we stay where we are? Or do we, do we come in line?
Right. Well, we've had a struggle with comp time in the past. And having a large balance of comp time being carried around is, well, it's disadvantageous not only for the county, but it's not entirely fair to the employee either, because so often that comp time can't be used. So, you know, I, I'm fine with the idea that we move it to the more traditional full-time definition. I think if you take, just general strain off, because it's difficult to.
It's, it is something that we have to enter in every year as a financial.
It's a liability.
It's a liability.
Our other localities come in line also with federal and state.
I can say that Hanover, Penraco, Caroline, New Kent, are the ones that I looked at. They all are already in line with that. New Kent works a 37 and a half hour a week, but they pay overtime based on the 40-hour week and the 2,080-hour annual rate. Everybody else is 40 hours straight up.
The vacation time factor, and it is.
It, it won't affect vacation time, it would affect the payout if somebody leaves. The hourly rate that's paid out for vacation time would be based on that 2,080 rather than the 1820. So, that would, that would lower the hourly rate for these payout.
We're at a 35-hour week, is that because you give lunch or?
Yeah. It was just, yeah, it was the way that it was written in before my time. I think it was Mr. Stuck that had authored it, who said, you remember when it used to be a 40-hour week?
24, right. Well, I think before Mr. Stuck revamped it, we just treated 8:30 to 4:30 as an eight-hour day. When he revamped it, he changed the definition, 8:30 to 4:30, the one-hour lunch period. Not tracked as paid time. To define as 35-hour, like 35-hour week.
Everybody's pay remains the same.
Right, so it only, they changed, they changed two things here, obviously. It changed the definition of, of the hours worked in the day. But then it also, it, it changed the way that we calculate.
Not the sound of cows, but the county is getting what we're paying for.
The county is getting more than what we're paying for, actually, I mean, in the sense that we're, in essence, giving everyone, except for the rare patient that somebody does work overtime, they're, they're paying for the 40-hour week for a person, in essence, and they're working the 35.
So, give me a real-world example, Ms. Branch came in this morning, 3:30, fired up the computer, here she is at 7:20.
Real-world example, the majority of the administrative staff that work overtime are either the maintenance folks who get called in after hours for issues, or Ms. Branch, or Ms. Cole for the planning meetings, those kinds of things. Those are the only ones that are non-exempt and work overtime, they, they get overtime. Most anyone else that's, that's here that works extra hours is exempt and doesn't receive overtime anyway.
I mean, I was always concerned about that in the past, too, and I forgot, Dan did that, but. I mean, because everywhere else you work, banks, you work nine hours, and you get an hour for lunch. So, literally, you're working eight hours, you take an hour off, so you work eight hours. How does that, just working 35 hours and getting paid for 40 hours?
Right, I mean, the traditional, traditional workday in most settings is nine-five, right? We're just 8:30 to 4:30.
Not for me, not for the state, we've always, we work eight hours, and we have to take an hour for lunch off the clock. I've never worked anywhere where I was given an hour for lunch, hey? I've been for 32 years, so I don't understand it at all.
Well, we can certainly open up a can of worms about the workday hours at some time in the future if you want, but I think for the purposes of this discussion, this night and year, just looking for some guidance on how we do this calculation moving forward.
Yes.
Right?
But how would you, would you like me to change it or not change it at all? But I just, with working with Sands Anderson in that interim period, they said, y'all really ought to examine the way that you're doing this, just to be more in line with federal standards.
Right, and it seems like the other local piece is doing it, too, and we don't change it now. But I predict we will be going over that shortly.
Right. So, any dissension on that point of view?
No. Okay, I will be glad to draft a resolution to make those changes in the manual to recall.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We assess the contract with Pearson Appraisal Services Incorporated.
Okay, were you in your agenda a red line copy of the contract proposal with Pearson Appraisal Services? And I would like your, your consideration to approve this and get going on with the reassessment. Some highlights of the proposal of the contract, that costs $20 parcel, with estimated parcel counts of a little over $1,000. Mr. Pearson has agreed to sign reassessment book. He will also provide staff for an office here in the administration building, right here in the foyer, corner, for the entire time duration of the contract. This contract, this grade of the 95% of parcels in the county have at least two features, key features of the improved property. Someone is not home, you will be leaving tags. And then the final reassessment, values will be effective in January of '23. Any questions I can answer on?
Indeed, not only based on this on the last contract, I wasn't more than, but it was some speculation in there of the, the assessor must establish a day office from 8:30 to 4:30, and maybe it's in there, I didn't see it, but we're not requiring that.
We are required.
I didn't see it in there, is it?
It is, it's, it's written as will be staff during all business hours. And none of this building is open.
And the other thing, it was kind of like a question and answer right in the middle of this. And it went into a big, uh, questions to evaluate for that $9 hour. Is, is that written in stone?
That isn't here for anything, he has to, if his staff are answering, someone has made a request, I think it's three times, or after the second time, the third time would be at a rate of $9 an hour. So, what Sunkhausen and I have talked about, discussed is that if somebody is calling him, then we're gonna take it over until we have to have them actually neighbor rule it on something. But generally speaking, it would be something that we could handle in ironing out instead of just taking up his time.
How many parcels are in the county? I know they, you said before.
Um, the estimated count is 11,197. There is some wiggle room on that, since I think different reports have been plus or minus 100. But that's part of what is going on with the data validation right now, with the system.
We, I know I asked Mr. Pearson when he was here, but the same paragraph is in there that must visit 95% of all parcels. And he kind of said, along with the previous assessment that didn't happen. It seems like the, the way that contract is written, still requiring him to do that, or?
Yes. It's, it's requiring him to do that.
To do what it does.
The visit rate of 95% of all parcels in the county.
So, what is the definition of this? So, so we can get that up there and everybody will understand. Does visit mean just, you know, do it through the computer or physically?
It needs to actually physically go there.
Yeah, he, he seemed to point in the direction when he was here that that might not happen. He said something.
There are.
Parcels were gonna be added, that's a.
Plenty of unimproved properties.
Which, if I remember from the previous assessment, I'm thinking it was around 5,000, something like that. So, does that mean it's gonna be 5,000 parcels, and that can be this?
Not according to our contract.
Okay, so I just wanted to point that out, so that is gonna be a requirement.
Yes.
So, am I correct, he can only leave out 560 parcs?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's all it has, too, it doesn't matter undeveloped or developed, it's all parcels.
That's, we're gonna, we put it in the contract, I just want to make sure that I'm just doing it. Right, this was the last time, 5,000 parcels didn't. Down the key, pictures of unimproved property could happen, but.
Okay, okay.
But he did not mention any use of parole or?
He is mentioning using or unimproved, and if he's not visiting the sites, then using, yeah, satellite imagery, searching the permit files, anything to note what's on that piece of property.
Was that in the contract?
Yes, it was. It's part of this, written within the RMP, part of the contract, and so it's not in the contract language, but it's in the RMP, this reference. We have a contract.
You cleared up, someone cleared up the shells and wells and all that?
Yes, and who's putting in a division and all. In fact, Mr. Pearson is, no, he's, his staff is tenants training vision and has gotten, they're giving their own instance of vision on their laptops, they're using, they use their own software, then they've talked the vision, worked it out, how to port it over into vision while on their own, and then we can put it into our system after the, when it's all approved.
This is maybe a cosmetic kind of thing, but I don't know if there's anything in the contract, if there's anything verbal or maybe just assumed, but is there any way we can make them have a little bit better interaction with the public? Because the last company was very nasty, I mean, a lot of.
Well, it's a contract.
It's in, it's in the contract, they're.
You want to make sure.
It's a public, and I think this is experienced.
Yeah, okay, like I said, all these problems you had, I just don't want to have again.
Well, one other thing, hold on. When we threw the, the other reassessment out, we asked about the surety bond. And when Amber looked at it, he said that the way the contract was written, it did not give us any protection so far as recovering it from breach of contract. Is it anything in this, that something was to happen that we can recover if it is breach of contract?
Well, the surety bond isn't taken until the contract is signed. But that's a question I can pose exactly to Mr. Roberts, I did put it to him, that you know all of our issues that we had. What can we do to protect ourselves?
Yeah, that was, that was his statement, that was his statement at the time. Actually, I think he had another assistant to read, to rectify us while we were in the process of that meeting, and that was their statement. That maybe, maybe get him to correct it, but we would not be able to recover it for breach.
I think his comment before was that it was money to fix the reassessment, not necessarily to recoup what we had to. You know, if you go there, I assume, right?
Sure.
Mr. Charles, we could readdress the creation of a, so this is an assessment advisory group, or whatever.
Right.
Name for it. I think it's highly important that we create a, not, it's not an oversight or anything to report daily or anything, give a citizens advisory group to act as an interface and relay it off between Pierce that revenue, Mr. Pearson's firm, the board, county administrator, just to synchronize everything for the education process for the citizens, et cetera.
Yeah, he recommends that.
Right. Yes.
There were, there were two options, so citizens' group authority or a board or assessors, which I don't think we want to do that to the extreme, but I, I would recommend, Mr. Bob Hubbard has volunteered to lead that up. We had to put together a, a charter of responsibilities and present it to that board, if that's acceptable to everyone. I would recommend limiting to no more than three, just to be streamlined. And, you know, kind of present to us, October, what we would.
I don't think we should let somebody else do that, that's our responsibility, we need to cover that group. We already have too much shadowing government going on with these groups meeting two or three times a week behind our backs and trying to push stuff around us that we've already found out about. We have a committee that's already, the assessment board that went through the train, we can start with them.
Well, Mr. Hubbard, one that's in that group, and he's been following up an awful lot with various things. And it just seems to be a natural lead for that, people getting together with others, including building contractors, folks that have been part of assessing your past careers. Well, I would offer them, you let him come up with a plan and present it.
I said, it's his little group, kicked out a bunch of the real estate people and developers in that little group, so. And you know it, because you're in that group, too.
We, okay, we were also told that if you couldn't serve on both, you can't serve on board equalization and be on that group. So, whoever's in the group will be eliminated from the board of equalization.
There is more board of equalization.
No, but we, we're gonna have to find somebody in that.
Exactly. Exactly. We don't start from scratch for somebody to bring, bring themselves up to speed.
Okay. Um. My thought with that. Is. That it. Have we put together any outlines of our own yet on this? We have not done anything further than the last works, uh, time that we spoke with Mr. Pearson on that one. Let's, let's do that.
Okay.
With, uh, you know, the understanding of the, I think the general consensus here is that. We don't want to go with the formal oversight board option, we want more of a. Work, an advisory work group. And see what authority we can grant.
Okay.
Unless. Let's get that out soon as practical. And let's try to establish and implement that. Well, you'd have done by the end of the year, right?
Right, okay.
All right, so let's begin discussion of that.
Okay.
Great. All right. Is there any action you need to take on this contract?
Yeah.
Well. Right. Besides the question, Mr. Garber put forth, are there any substantive changes to the contract that anybody has?
Right.
That they want inserted? Before we definitely take this to Mr. Pearson.
He's already something.
Right, yeah, right, then we sign them.
Yeah.
Get to work.
Andrew's.
He has to. Mr. Andrew?
Sorry, Andrew McRoberts, sorry.
Okay, it's.
As long as we have a legal system.
Okay, we'll get into that question, try to. All right, this is one, uh, that was added on at the request of, uh, the president of the Farm Bureau, Mr. Pierce saw is with us tonight. Wants to discuss some comments made by the commissioner at the last meeting regarding enforcement of the land use program. Uh, so I want to turn it over to Pierce saw his comments and then we can discuss.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, later last week, I had a conversation with Mr. Garber, but I had a few other conversations with, uh. Different people who plan for land use. We worked hard on trying to keep it and get it straight. We had, and you were part of the thing where basically to qualify. You had to have a producer's report, because everybody I rent from, whoever. All listed, uh, USDA five years of. Property force and. Annual showing income sales. And then what's happening? I have people come in there and ask, we're told to have F schedules, a whole lot more criteria than what we agreed upon start with. Then the other day, from Mr. Garber as well as myself, and her all pissed off about the forestry side. And she said, we have to leave that because the program said I'm cut the timber in here, I didn't cut it. She says, I didn't call the land use. I disagreed with her, I turned around and, you know, my point was. September sales would be down, I had other stuff that was presented, did more, I couldn't stand extra income, there's a lot of different things. Same thing about replanting, I had some properties took two to three years to get into development programs to get replanted, they don't have them overnight. My point is. Form revalidation to hold nine yards, uh. I have Mr. Middle for him, that he had one, I didn't have one. I have Landman Carol, well, he had land in the panel. Only thing we have to do in each county, is send us a sheet every year. Oh, are you still in the program, are you still, uh. Under land use, checking us? If you have made changes, check this box. And you're required to come by and fill out the necessary form, whatever you had changed. That's all I've done in Carolina for almost nine years now. Which makes it simplified, easy on. Everybody in the county, less headaches, less hassles. And the only problem I have with the state agency of five years, if you go clean that property, you don't have a five year record. Because the first year of record falling is the day you cleaned it up and started it.
Right.
So, you know, that's hard on us to clean up property. And I just think we need, you know, we worked hard to get it there and how it's happening now, getting what we agreed upon to start with. And I just like you say, I was talking with Mr. Garber as well as Mr. Warren, is let's simplify. Once we had land use, we got it straight. And one form that we send in every year to say you're done. And keep it simple and basic, that we don't have so no hard work or anything on anybody, even the staff, no campaign. Now, if any questions, do my head.
Oh, I just like that, one thing I appreciate for you coming up here. Supporting the people from here. Uh, now on the piece of property in Gloucester County, that's unfortunately used also. I never had to do a forestry plan, so all that criteria never had to be met there, but the, these, these. If, so if, what happened with, when y'all were doing the negotiation salad this year and you and her were all had to get together on this? The, uh. Initially, they were saying that the forestry plan had to be by a professional forester. Or the, the junior department of forest. Well, I'm one of them, I got my plan done by the, of the junior department of forest. But layers with so much effort, they allowed the individual landowners to do their own plan.
Correct.
And I would be one of the vets who most of the individual landowners, when they did their. Did not speculate that it does or recommends, this, which, which the forestry department did on my parcels. Recommend that the timber be cut in three to five years. If the individual does it, he's not going to say that. So if, if it's, if a parcel was going to be ineligible simply because somebody doesn't cut the timber. You know, I don't think that's, you know, that's, that's fair. Because when you cut it, when you cut, uh, a piece of cut over time was not very good look yet. It is such a thing as a genuine seed law, that standing is predominantly kind, you, you are required by law to reseed it and plant.
Correct.
But horrible, a standard pattern weighted, there's no kind of requirement, so. If somebody did their own plan, they may not, you know, if they were going to sell the property or whatever, they may not be put in. Well, you know, reseed. So, yeah, I think it's, if we can, if it's possible to clean it up because. Um, if different localities are doing it differently, then that would lead me to believe that we can do something different.
Well, see, I know with Caroline, I did not have that before your plan.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think with Mr. Middle, someone with a panel where it did not mean the full street plan.
I, I've been trying to go back and I just, it's been so long now, I get so many emails to, you know, to, to find those discussions, but. Um, you know. Yes, the whole point of us doing that re-remail. You know, after we did the, the, really owners won in twenty fifteen, the things and board members at the time thought approved. Watch for abuse in the system and that failed to materialize. Um, you know, you and myself and Mr. Pearson pushed to pay it to. Again, maybe not the, the, the status that it was beforehand, but a program that, you know, requires some documentation, but not, um. Not one that would, uh, cause people to get tossed from the program for paperwork errors or. Um, you know, things that were difficult to, to understand or just flat difficult to, to provide. Now, obviously you have some conversations with Slumhouse, or she appears ready to approach the, uh, the dice here, so, um, yeah, we'll get her.
If, if I can, could I ask Mr. Pierce over one more thing? The, the USDA report that you're speaking of?
Yes.
The landowners did that also. And it says, when you break it down, the amount of acres that were farm for each individual crop. And also has a Palmerite even.
Correct.
If, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
So that in itself is proof, you get that every year.
Yeah.
That is proof that that piece of, that that parcel would, that agricultural farm land is in use.
Right, well, just example, if I read it from you, my sheet would say Stuart Garber. How many acres of farm land, how many acres of wood, like, it all spells that.
Exactly.
And see, that's, makes it so easy, that's how I do the, uh, rentals I use. They're on my property, I get a piece of paper from them, they sign it, I get all the necessary paperwork and, uh. But like I said, with Caroline, there's no forestry plan. And the other side of the coin, I'll look at the opposite way. If it's in land use, it's not being built at home.
Correct.
And I just, you know, I like to see it simplified, just like I do in Carolina, what makes it whole lot easier. You get a piece of paper, if you check it. And if you don't fill out in Carolina, come back and see them, there is a company, but I do new job and.
Well, thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, I wanted to stay close, um, and we'll have Mr. Parker.
Good evening, Chairman, if I'm just a little worried. I just wanted to say that, um, people in land use for forestry, their acreage is assessed at six hundred and twelve dollars an acre. If they were not in forestry or land use, there would be a set between sixteen hundred and twenty five hundred dollars an acre. So that's a substantial savings they get by being in land use. And I am in favor of land use because it slows down development. And again, you know, we don't want five hundred more cars around burning up the common days, you know, a hundred acres comes out of land use and they put it in wells and find their homes, if you mind me. I am enforcing the ordinance as it is written. And the ordinance says, um, the forestry plan is required. And it says that. Excuse me. The forestry management plan should include planned harvest timetable. It's in the ordinance, I cannot accept a forestry plan that says, I will harvest the timber when it is matured. I don't need to decide when it's matured, they can put whatever timetable they want, in ten to fifteen years, I will reseed in two to three years, I will inspect the property in two to three years. They have to have some kind of timetable. Everyone has to do the same, have the same things included in their forestry plan. Then they accept one plan and not another, and then so and so did they have that in their plan and they're in land use and accept their plan. Everyone has to be treated the same. That is what's required by the ordinance. If you want, don't want to require a forestry plan, then you can amend the ordinance and remove that requirement. But that's how it is written today.
Okay.
And no one has contacted me to complain when I sent them a letter that you need to add this to your forestry plan. I'm in my office every day, Monday through Friday, now I just pick up the phone and call and claim to me.
I guess I'm just the lucky, unlucky person, but, uh, how do you determine, when your forestry plan says recommends? About, about the Virginia Department of Forest, how do you determine recommends from must or shall?
And they recommend that you harvest in ten to eight year, you know, say your forestry plan is most mandated two thousand fifteen, when everyone had to be validated. A harvest is recommended in eight to ten years. But they're revalidating, you know, this year, it's not required, but what if it was, you know, five years? And so it should, all they have to do is check on their list that we have a future harvest plan. And write down it will be done by the end of two thousand two, twenty two. They just have to have some kind of plan, it cannot be open ended, that's what's required, I go, what is that?
And my, my biggest problem with, with it is that, just like I said earlier. When Charlie and Sally first started speaking, it was going to be, had to be a professional forester or the Virginia Department of Forest. It later changed, it's a large number of people, myself included. That got the Virginia Department of Forestry or a professional forester to do it. And certainly, it went change to allow a individual landowner to do their own plan. I'm sure that they. Probably very great. Than, than what was in my.
Can I ask a question? Is it a question of just the presence of the chart in the plan, of timetable in the plan? Or is it a question of enforcement by your office if that timeline does not adhere to? Because what I see in the ordinance is that timetable is required, but not that in adherence to the timetable is disqualified, right?
That is true, I mean, I had people, you know, their plans says they should have had reharvested within five years, and so now it's six years. They can write on the affidavit, uh, you know, a harvest is planned and will be completed by the end of two thousand twenty one and end of two thousand twenty two, and then.
Right, we're just going to update the, the plan.
So the answer is, I, I have not disqualified anyone.
Okay.
I tell them, this is what you need to put in your forestry plan. Your ordinance says what's required, A, one, two, three, you know, A, B, C, D, E. It says what's required.
So what I, what I heard, when I was having a conversation with Mr. Pierce, I suppose there was concern about your office. Um, enforcing those timelines that mentioned in these plans. There was some concern that, like, you know, basically that's not something that we talk about and that's something that appeared in your.
If they're, if they signed the affidavit in two thousand sixteen and said they're going to have a forest in five to eight years, and now it's time for them to have a harvest. I want to know that they got a harvest, where they need some of the new forestry plan, why it wasn't harvested, harvested and what it will be harvested. Well, I didn't write a plan as saying you must harvest or it should be harvested, they submitted that plan and they signed that. That's the thing.
Harvest, harvest of, of timber is greatly dependent upon the prevailing prices of that timber.
Yeah, and that's why they can have a two to five year.
So I think her point is. That that's fine. That if the plan changes, is make an edit to your document, documenting the change. Is that something we've had, the, the bureau in general can be on board with?
Uh, yeah, but where I got it from her, first time I had a conversation, is like a comprehensive plan. It's set in stone, it can't change, that's how I took it.
That was, that was my understanding.
That's how I took it.
And she clearly stated that's not the case.
No, I, I sent back a plan to a man today, I scan it.
It's a plan.
And he had an award document and.
Okay, so I, I think our disagreement is just one language, uh, maybe used previously, but it sounds like, you know, you're, you're saying that you need to amend the plan, if the plan changes. Right?
Yeah, and if they have a method plan that's unfiled, they can submit a new plan.
Oh, we can change.
But must have.
But this isn't like, this isn't like, you know, English four oh one, that you, they can just copy and paste and change that, right, okay, so.
I mean, the ordinance says what must be included and it says it must have a harvest timetable. And if, you know, they said we didn't harvest for too much, you know, the border is dry and we get, you know, too proud, it's not ready, it'll be harvested in the next two to three years.
What happens if, if, if the excuse is not good to you? Is that who determines?
I don't think you need an excuse, it just needs that.
Well, she said that they need to give her a reason why they hadn't completed the harvest, it's, you know.
Well, I had one man say that his wife died, he's very emotional, but he'll do it by the end of two thousand point, the missus, they won't sign it, that's good.
Right, but I don't even show you that level of detail.
No, I mean, he authored.
Right, but I don't think they need to send that detailed responses to why they have harvests, they just didn't submit the plan with the updated timetable.
So if.
All they have to say, the timber was not ready to be harvested, no. And you better have to give a reason.
If that's not a fundamental requirement in other counties.
But that's what it takes.
That's, that's beyond complicated.
And this is the ordinance I must enforce, and it says there must be a harvest.
I know, but we, we as a board can physically change that.
Absolutely.
We can.
You can not, you know, eliminate the forestry plan altogether.
But I think for now, we, we understand a little bit better what she needs in the interview time, because to do an ordinance revision does take some time, and so people are trying to revalidate now, they just need to know that they need to. Have a timetable.
All right, but what she, I understand that part, I can be with that right now, but I think we, I'm with Mr. Garber, we need to change it totally.
Sure, yeah. Sure. Yeah, I can actually get on board with that. That's fine. But in the end, you know.
What do you think about that? They are saving a substantial amount of money. So.
And so are the.
I mean, I think.
So is the county. So are the forests and all these other counties that do not require it.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, so.
I mean, so that's a policy decision for the board. You want anybody to get the lower land use values by just saying, I'm in forestry.
Well, what was now, I don't think we need to go that far with this. I think there's a middle ground that we can find, so.
And when you say timetable too, it's not set in stone by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, it's within two to three years. And then when you revalidate, if it's not done, you say, you know, the timber wasn't right. The one that's the harvest, you know, within two years. I mean, so you can always change your forestry plan. As long as that person finds out the need, that they're going to do it, then I can accept it.
All we have to do is is as a board, if if we are in favor of changing the ordinance later. Just just to, because all the counties are up here, not though, right, who established that?
Yeah, that's for the boards to decide.
So I think we have a, we have a interim solution. All right, which I think we have a better understanding now of what you're looking for based on the current ordinance. And the desire to maybe amend the ordinance to. Make it a little more flexible.
I mean, I have not rejected anymore. And I have sent documents that say, add this, change this. You know, it's an old document, so they still have another entire month before the new applications I do. They have two full months before revalidations I do. So there's plenty of time.
Well, when anybody's revalidated this year, it is is going to have to meet this this standard because.
They're going to have to have some kind of timetable in their force.
Right, we cannot amend the ordinance at that time. For that, so.
All right, question, what do she have, what do we have to do for home land? What do you require?
Then you have to have your schedule app or the schedule app of the water market. Something probably. I haven't had, um, only one course agriculture revalidation and barre prevention. And it was someone who's been a long-term farmer and they had this property request. And really, if I had a, um, a situation, I didn't know, I was going to call Mr. Pierce that's saying, this is a personal farmer. But, I mean, it hasn't come up. I mean, it says on the application, you have to have the schedule app. You have to show or, um, you see, so maybe a thousand dollars in sales a year or crop insurance, you know.
Right, I think it's, I think it's a series of of ors, right?
Yeah, schedule app or. In fact, the other friend come to talk to me, says she had to have the schedule app. We as farmers do not want. Because that's open for public or any tax records regarding up here.
Okay.
Yeah, so they can have like a crop.
Right, so schedule app or I think it was three pieces.
Or you have, you know.
But I just want to make sure it's clarified.
Right, so the schedule does not, schedule does not require, although it is allowable as a form of documentation to the others. So.
There's been more forestry, I mean, updates coming in than agricultural.
Well, with this, is there a deadline if they haven't sent in that chart? That they're going to be put out of land use?
They actually, as long as, there's a penalty if they file after the due date. But they have actually until the summer party first. And the penalty is substantial. It's ten percent of tax due for that year.
Well, because that first year, we made it a an absolutely hard and fast date. I think the only people that actually got DQ'd were people who.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, especially out of state people.
Yeah.
Who've got mail very close to the deadline and struggled to get the documentation together in time.
David now, scan an email. Yeah, there's really no, I mean, the, um, we have David by the way, just like weeks ago. Yeah.
Sure, I'm saying, I'm, more background, why we have that in a way through the, through the end, so. And I also mean, it sounds like we've got an understanding.
Well, I understand the forestry, but I like what Stuart was saying. You know, the other counties are not accepting it, so forestry plan is.
I know. Yeah, we took it out and they climbed on that cheaper.
Well, that's what I was saying with the other part where I do in Caroline, Gideon does it, panel work. That is a form you check every year. Uh, he's still in the I A G's. Check, sitting there with that card, and there's any changes. In land use, you are required to go to her. If you don't go to her, she's got to come up to you, there's a penalty because you didn't do your job with the landowners if you change something. And it makes it so simple and her, oh, she had one little piece there.
When I spoke to you one, two weeks ago, I did say, I don't really expect anyone to be disqualified. And now he has called my office, you know, and I'm there, so. Yeah, someone did have a question. Did you call? And I said, this is what you need to do. Here, I'll take you an example, because I have a generic one. I'm sent up here. So it's not that difficult.
Just one question, Charlie, did you get called? At Farm Year?
Yes.
That's what I wanted.
I had one after I talked with Stuart, my phone every night and blowing up.
Yeah, you know, and and Charlie knows more about what certainly Travis and Stephen do, and probably you. But I didn't have all the answers to it. And I recommended that they they call the challenge.
I knew that in my mind, I thought, I have any questions, I'm calling Charlie.
You know, he, uh, appreciated what he did tonight and, uh. I would certainly be in favor of doing what we can do to make it easier.
Uh, what I do for Caroline, for me, is so simple. And when I get the paper, this, I should be getting it next week. Time from ringing up here, I would see it that way. It's a simple.
Sounds like, sounds like we're on, we're on similar pages here.
I mean, it's not my intention to disqualify anyone from land use. I just want to make sure if someone looks at my records, I'm doing what I'm supposed to and I'm enforcing it. The same for every single person.
I think. And I think again, I think it was more a question of of understanding, uh, exactly what was meant with some of the.
And there's so many time, you can give me whatever information I want.
Thank you.
Well, my thanks. Thank you.
All right, now the board of supervisors requests.
Anyone seen any activity by chance if I'm making forty ordinance? Anyone see anything on three sixty mowing?
They, the only, I did see him picking up trash up there and I can't remember what day it was, but it was recent.
Maybe it was a start.
There, yeah, they always, they always pick the litter.
Yeah, they they had quite like three or four up there picking up trash. But that's gracious, huh?
I drove the reason yesterday about two billion. Well, right, it's the topic of conversation, I think, in in public spheres as well. You know, VDO's response to it was kind of shrugy. Uh, basically, we're getting to it. Uh, but we got some other topics conversation that I think reward that that we could. Talk about labor sessions, options possibly for us to take on some.
Does like the, I hope the potential for us to be able to do some things as a county versus relying on them, something to explore. Mr. Hudson, would you like to give us a quick update on all fronts?
They were, I've been unable to get an update from them today. But I is applied for, um, there hasn't been any.
Challenges.
Any challenges to any of our areas. Um, the first area that APB is. Set to start construction on was the area they applied for an RDOG grant for. Rolled into the body grant now, but is not waiting on body grants. However, they let us know that's. That's federal grant and they have not received word on that yet. They don't expect any problem with it, but they are just taking much longer to award those than they were anticipating. There doesn't, they have not let us know that there's been any problem with what their final timeline is.
And so the schedule is right now, we hope to be awarded in quite a few December time to start building.
Right, well, I I asked that question in an email because I got contacted by at least three different constituents over the weekend or prior to the weekend. Um, asking. Uh, when they could expect progress on phase one, because I observed that we got in the beginning was talking about, I think, beginning construction in in Q four and they've not seen. Any staging or anything going on. So their experience with timeline was classified. Well, they were, I was curious if the project timeline was was was, uh, being extended by this body grant application. They were more confusing us.
Well, if you look at the engineering, you'll use and start to build something. Exponentially expanded.
Engineered whole thing, right? I get it, I get it. Um, but just my own point was that. There's people watching closely. I think they brought up the point at one of our update meetings, that's something that's going to hold up. Be the biggest hurdle for a lot of localities and any construction project right now is getting the materials. And they already kind of put ours on our order. That we approve things first. All right. Anything else?
I really don't have anything. I've probably talked too much behind already. I guess pass it on. Thanks for everybody that came tonight.
Mr. Hatton.
The only thing I said, I gotta agree with Charlie, we probably ought to change that word. It makes it more streamlined. I do not think the board has a majority or even close to it of doing away with it. So why not make it a little bit easier for them? The other thing I, Steve, can you get me the contacts for VIA?
Sure.
Who who is the president?
Got a new contact, his name is leaving like. And he has been responsive.
Okay, and my concern is the bricks in Westport, they've been allegedly replacing those that are busted up for a year now.
Right, well, they said that they were having a hard time finding the bricks.
Well, we have to do something just.
Well, I told them just pave over the thing. Remember when they started that project as well?
The response of the town government would be to that, I don't know. But it does take a lot of use from track to trails coming through there. Ain't no doubt.
Right. So, yeah, I don't know about this.
I was shocked when they took it in, I'll be honest. I could see it downtown, but at that point, it didn't make.
Was that a westbound town at that point in town?
I think it was just decorative. That's what I think. I don't remember it being a specific, you know, what. But I I do not know that. And that's really all I have. Everybody, again, I I repeat it every time, get your shots. A couple more people I know have left this one this this week. That's great.
Nice, like I said, we're going to revisit the mowing thing that we gave, you know, saying that there's some options, maybe they're coming up. I said, it's a county maybe. Work with the contractors to pay ourselves for extra or extra. Two in between there twice a year, which I'm happy something I would look into. Because like I said, those are pretty bad. That honest press is good. Real tall, some places, it's hard to call. And. Anything else right now? Okay. Um, other than the land use ordinance discussion. And the discussion about the advisory board, uh, as soon as practical. Who's got the clothes?
I didn't hear a second, dude.
I have not. Second, thank you. Uh, any discussion? Ms. Branch?
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hatchett?
Hi.
Chairman Skolski?
Hi.
We'll be back in a bit. Motion to recommени- meaning no concessions. Discussion. The branch.
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hatchett?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Chairman Skolski?
I, we need S R one.
Mr. Chairman, I move, we accept S R one, second.
Discussion. Ms. Branch?
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hatchett?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Chairman Skolski?
Motion to, so I, and motion to adjourn.
So second, I mean.
That's good enough. This branch.
Mr. Hatchett?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Hi. Dern?